Call the meeting to order for the regular meeting, uh, regular meeting of Tuesday, October 12th of Verona Borough Council. Please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Christine.
President Dr. Nancy Carpenter.
Present.
Vice President Dave Matlin.
Present.
Janet Loalbo.
Present.
Sylvia Provenza.
Present.
Trish Redzek Showalter.
Present.
Raymond Suchevich.
Present.
Joseph Warren.
Present.
David Recupero.
Present.
Craig Alexander.
Present.
Matthew Pitch.
Present.
Christine D. Runk. Present.
Thank you. Uh, so we're gonna start with a registered comment from Rea Holma regarding the, uh, planting of excess seedlings from the Selden Avenue project. Rea.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Rea.
Hello, council mayor and community. Um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can I get permission to do so, please? Wonderful. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, alright. Hello, council mayor and community. Um, I'm super happy to announce that the fall work to create a native green space on Selden Avenue has been completed this weekend. Um, if you haven't stopped by, please do. This is what you'll be greeted by, um, a hillside cover covered with jute, straw, seeds and seedlings. Soon, young green plants will begun begin poking through the, uh, erosion control mats that we have installed and providing a preview of the green growth that will become a vibrant sea of purple and yellow, uh, flowers next summer. Very exciting. At this time, we have about thirty, uh, seedlings remaining of purple cone flowers and black eyed Susans that were not needed for Selden. So I think it would be wonderful to plant these along the bank at Riverbank Park. This would add color, interest and ecological biodiversity along the river that can be enjoyed as P- as folks walk along the path or relax on the benches at Riverbank. I'm including some of the pictures of locations that I think would be ideal to receive these plants. I did mark five different locations that you can see on my screen. I've starred where they are within the park and then I've also provided pictures that show, uh, it more clearly what those specific areas look like. This work will be completely, uh, it will be completed by Sea Green folks and will not require any assistance or maintenance from the borough. Please let me know if you have any concerns with this extra beautification opportunity. Otherwise, we can begin planting as soon as this week.
Okay, great, Ray. Is that it?
That's it. Is everyone okay with this?
Does anyone have any questions for Rea?
I was passed there today. Looks very nice. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Wonderful. Oh, yeah, I, I meant to say, um, did I not include it on here? Oh, yeah, we had seventeen volunteers, like hands-on volunteers and a total of seventy hours of people power. It was, it was pretty great. Um, we were there for all three days, but we did, uh, we did end a few hours early, so that was fantastic.
Yeah, so I don't hear any objections, so I think you're good to go, Rea.
Thank you very much. I would just like to put a shameless plug in here for Sea Green, um, because we did get a lot of people stopping by and wondering what was going on. If anybody wants to be a part of sustainable change in Verona and help out with fun projects like this, there are different ways that people can get involved. On the screen, um, there is a survey that people can take to let us know what topics or projects interest you within Verona. Um, you can join a Sea Green meeting. On here is a, a link to join us on Zoom. It's always the same link. Our next meeting is Wednesday, November seventeenth at six PM, or you can just email me. My email address is rea.sunshine.pgh@gmail.com. Um, thank you very much for your time and I look forward to planning the rest of these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For coordinating this great project.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good job. Okay, at this time, are there any emergency additional agenda items?
I have a, my agenda item to purchase will actually need to be moved under new business as you'll be in motion.
Okay. Oh, you mean where you have under your, uh,
Purchase request.
Purchase request. You just put that under new business?
Yes, please.
Okay. You can talk about what it is in this new format, Janet, during your time and then when we get to the motion part, then, then we'll know what we're
Thank you.
voting on. So just for everybody's information, we're trying out a new, uh, format for the agenda, so things are gonna look a little different tonight. This is also my first time doing this, leading the meeting in this way, so please have patience with me. I'll probably be, uh, asking Christine some questions if I get stuck because, um, she's the, she's the main person who figured this out, but we're hoping that doing this will shorten the meeting somewhat. Anyway, at this point, council here comments on agenda-related items only. Please approach the podium or raise your virtual hand and clearly state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any public comments at this time? Okay, anyone see anything? You?
Nope.
Alright, then, uh, what's on here next is approval of minutes and monthly finance, financial reports. So Dave, I think you're up.
Okay, um, so everyone on our council and mayor should have, um, the September financial reports, uh, emailed and also, uh, our copy delivered. So, um, as typical for the month, we have the balance sheet. We have the treasurer's report, which, um, just shows the fund balances and receipts and expenditures for each fund, uh, the major expenditures and receipts. Um, we have a budget versus actual report. Uh, so for the budget versus actual report, total income through September thirtieth on the year in the general fund is one million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, seventy, excuse me, one million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, thirty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents, and that is eighty-six point four six percent of the budget. The total expense through September thirtieth in the general fund is one million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and eleven cents for fifty-nine percent of the budget. The large receipts we saw this month, uh, were the Oakmont Municipal Authority for the sewer rental fees, the amount of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and seventeen cents. The Commonwealth PA, this was the state pension aid for twenty-twenty-one that goes towards the, uh, MMO, the Minimum Municipal Obligation. And this is the amount of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Also from the Commonwealth PA was state aid from the foreign fire insurance tax disbursement. This was in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars and three cents. This basically goes from the borough straight to the Verona Volunteer Firefighters, uh, Relief Fund. And in the same amount, and then county hauling, uh, we had a one thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and two cent refund for billing errors over the past year, year and a half. And then moving on to the bills, actually, I'll stop there. Does anyone have any questions about the budget versus actual or the, uh, receipts for this month?
I'd just like to make a comment, so some people don't know what the fire insurance is, the fire relief. The state gets money from everybody's fire insurance. You pay this, your fire insurance to your insurance company, it goes into a kitty. And then the state pays the, disperses a certain percentage of that back to the borough, which goes to the fire department. So the money was already deposited from the state into the borough's account, and then the borough has to write us a check to the fire department for, for the, the amount of money, so that we're allowed to spend on firefighting equipment. So just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you, Ray. That was, that was, that was good. Um, the, as far as the bills and dispersments, um, the total, total amount of bills we had, um, this would have been, I believe, through October first, or September first through October, uh, twelfth would be seventy thousand, sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Uh, the large dispersments we saw there were, uh, for Gladfelter Insurance Group, that's our quarterly insurance payment of twelve thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars. And then going back to the, the fire, uh, insurance tax disbursement with the same amount of nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars and three cents. That was dispersed to the Verona Fire Department Relief Association. This is a pass through for that state aid. And then finally, we had, uh, Highmark Blue Shield, uh, health insurance payment for the month of five thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, which, um, includes the share for new employee, which is, uh, our new borough secretary. So, uh, those are the large dispersments. Any question on the, the bill?
I had a question about the first part. So you think we have Peter MMO for this year?
Uh, for, for twenty-twenty-one, um, going out this week. So we get that money in, um, it usually comes into September, then we have thirty days to, um, make the payment to the pension fund for our, our obligation. So, yeah, there's, there's a little bit of a
Snapper.
between getting the check and everything and, and it, yeah, so it, that just came in, I think, very end of September, the last week of September, so. Yep. Anything else? So I will take a motion, uh, council to, or I'll make a motion to approve the list of bills dated October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Seven.
Okay, motion first by Mr. Matlin, second by Mr. Suchevich. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Oh. Wrote a comment or a question?
Okay. Yes, please. You come up to the podium, please. We're recording it.
Six-three-six, Third Street, Verona. Um, that relief that you're getting for the fire department, what is the amount?
Nine thousand.
It varies every year.
Okay, can we put that toward the purchase of the fire truck?
No.
So it can relieve the taxpayers?
No. That's only used for firefighting, uh, equipment, insurance, right? Equipment, I mean, like hose lines, breathing apparatus, stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
They have a list. There's a book on it, it's called Act Eighty-four, Pennsylvania, all their acts, and it's, what, what that can be spent on. It, it's, it's in that book, Act Eighty-four.
Any other questions or comments from council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Anything else, Dave?
That's it on the, uh, financials.
Alright, so in, uh, in the email that Christine mailed out were five different months of minutes. She's catching up. So there was April twenty-seventh, May eleventh, May twenty-fifth, June eighth and June twenty-ninth. These were sent out for people to have a chance to read and make any comments of any changes. So at this point, I'll take a motion. Can I approve all five?
As long as nobody has any objection, I would approve all five at once.
Okay, so unless anyone has any objection, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes, uh, of the dates I just mentioned.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, first by Mr. Suchevich, second by Sylvia Provenza. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks for doing that.
Yes, good job.
And we'll have more for you at the next meeting until we get caught up. Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, opposed? No. Uh, motion pass. Okay, so I guess I'm next. This is interesting. Alright, uh, I just wanna make a brief comment because I heard a lot of people, uh, talking about the new electronic sign up by Off the Rails. Here's my understanding of what happened there, and I would like Matt or Craig to chime in if I get any of this wrong or make additional comments. Just so we can put this to bed. My understanding is that the zoning permit was applied for, it was approved by Mr. Pitch. And the reason, as I understand it, that it was approved is because our current zoning ordinance says the business district is defined as from center to south. Is that correct, Matt?
Correct.
Yeah, so they're outside of that area. You know, there may be some other things, uh, I'm not gonna go into all the details about that, but the bottom line is our zoning officer approved the application to put that sign in. So then the building inspector from BIU looked at it and the drawings and approved that. Uh, the permit was paid for, for the appropriate amount, and, uh, they had, the building permit was good from August eleventh of this year till August eleventh of next year. And so it is up there now, and anybody who, uh, was concerned about the difference between that and Mr. Will Winter, Mr. Winter wanted to advertise on his sign and make money. It's kinda like, more like a billboard. And, um, so, uh, that was a big difference between Off the Rails and the winter accounting. So that is a very brief explanation, as I understand it, about that sign. Is there anything, Matt or Craig, that I left out that you might wanna add? About the sign?
No, that's correct. The only thing I will add to it is I stopped down there before the meeting to see what type of advertisements were on there. I will have to send him a letter as the electronic signs are not allowed to have animation on them. And the one slide is a, a train moving and another one has flames flickering, so I'll have to send him a letter requesting that all images are stationary. So, uh, beyond that, anything that he's showing is what he offers on site, so that's permitted.
Okay.
And that was the difference between his sign and Mr. Winter's sign. Wasn't just advertising, was the fact that he wanted to advertise products sold elsewhere. And that makes it a billboard, like you said.
Right, and ask people to pay him to do so.
Correct.
Right. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to do, this, uh, project over at Selden that Rea coordinated with her husband Josh was a really huge, uh, project. It, it took a lot of work from a lot of people. And I have a list of all of the people that contributed, and I just wanna thank them and I hope to God I didn't forget anybody here. Rea and Josh, Erica Love, Jenny Manners, Mike Forbeck, Joey Warren, Jen Marasco Poon, myself, Laura Jacko, Michelle Goring, Trish Redzek Showalter, Danny Showalter, Kelly Collins, Kathy and Luke Maddox, and Ruthie Goran. These are the people who spent their time on an unusually warm October weekend to make what you see now a possibility. So, uh, thank you very much. I just can't wait till spring and see how beautiful it looks. I can't think of anything else right now, um, but as you can see, this first part of the agenda is everybody's reports. Then at the end of the agenda, we're just gonna make a bunch of motions, I hope, and presumably pass them, and that, that's how we're now doing the meeting, so. We'll be moving on to the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just have, um, on my agenda is updates from our engineer Matt. I can go down them and you could briefly tell the board, the Duquesne Lights, um, it's, uh, South and ARB where they put the new pole in.
So I went back to, to take recent pictures, cause we had provided pictures to them in July when it first came up, uh, and sent them an email, which I CC you on, Mayor, and we have not heard back from them. So I did talk to Mr. Alexander. I think I will provide one more email to him, and then if not, we will provide him a letter, giving him a timeframe to make the repair. If not, we will, and then bill them for it.
And what he's, what we're talking about is they put a new pole in, and the old pole's still there, but the, uh, traffic for the, um, walking is blocked by the new pole. And the handicap accessibility, there's a big hole there, um, they haven't, uh, repaired that also.
And where's this located?
Uh, right at the corner of South and ARB, Allegheny River Boulevard.
Okay.
And the other thing is South Avenue Haven, when we did that, um, South Avenue and First Street, there were bricks showing that they dug up as they milled it by the school.
Yes, I did talk to the contractor about that. We are holding retainedage on the, the pay estimate, so he is aware that they have to come back and fix that. There was also a couple other minor items, uh, he has to put in a, a small wedge curb for a resident, uh, at the end of First Street there. So he's aware of it, and we also have, are holding back money to ensure that.
And, uh, Cribbs Field update, as far as punch list, I know, uh, when we were, most of us were up there, I guess all of us were up there, we noticed underneath the pavilion, the, um, I don't know what you'd call it, the ceiling, but the, uh, the aluminum is all disordered.
Yeah, I stopped up there today before the meeting. Uh, he did get quite a few, uh, rivets in there. There's still a couple pieces that I'd like to see him touch up with another rivet or two. Um, some of the other minor stuff, um, some of the caulking and paint touch up that needed to be done, that was all done. Around the back of the pavilion, he brought in some additional soil to level that area off, so I will talk to him about, um, a, a couple more rivets. I did see that most of it was taken care of there, but there were still, uh, a couple seams that were a little loose.
Okay, and, uh, both you and the chief, you could comment on this, the update on the cameras for Cribbs Field, for, especially for the bathrooms and what have you.
Those are up and running.
Oh, they are?
Yep, and he can view them down here at the station.
So we could go ahead and open the bathrooms?
Yeah, it is the only one that we have, the, the one that you looked at the field, we have to raise that up higher on the pole, cause the new pavilion roof is higher. So the camera looks into the roof rather than looking at the, the field.
Okay.
But, uh, I think the chief was scheduling that to be done.
Okay, and last I have is
Actually, um, there were two cameras that
Wait, Chief, Chief, could you please come and use the mic?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Actually, there were two, uh, two cameras on that pole. One of the cameras, the lower one was pointing towards the playground. We already have one pointing towards the playground. So he's gonna move those two cameras down a pole so that we can look at the pavilion from the other side.
Okay.
So you've got something going towards the overheads for the kitchens area. So that's what that camera's gonna be for, and then the upper camera will be watching the whole part. That's the only difference.
And now you can see those from afar, like down here, you don't have to be within twenty-eight feet.
That's key wrapped. Yeah, except it's a little annoying, cause I'm sitting there and looking at the cameras and the kids are running wild, and I'm wanting to get the car and drive up their tons. Stop, I can't do that every time.
I'm glad we've updated that technology for you guys.
Okay, um, and you know, speaking of, uh, the playground there, I was over there the other day, uh, with my grandkids, and, uh, the one gate is open right by the bathroom, uh, to the children's playground, and there was a lot of kids there under the pavilion, which is fine. Uh, but they was forcing them to come into the kids' playground, that one gate there. My suggestion would be to shut the gate off and just have the one entrance like we've always done.
The entrance, which one?
The, the main entrance that we had for the kids' playground. There's two entrances that are open now. The main one, as you walk down from outside.
You mean walk down from?
From Second Street.
Second.
But right next to the bathroom, there's a, uh, uh, gate there that's open, and it's forcing the older kids to walk in and play on the swings and what have you. And I'm talking thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids.
You're talking about the door that we had opened while they were working on the pavilion so people could use the playground, that one? Cause there, I, I thought to the playground, there's one close to the bathroom and then one on the other side.
The one, I'm talking about the one closest to the bathroom. My suggestion would be to lock that, because it's forcing the older kids to come into the playground. You know, it's much easier, they go from here to where Janet is into the playground, where other words, they would have to go up, down further, then come around, then come in.
Okay.
That's my opinion. You might wanna go up and look at it.
I don't understand what you're talking about, but
There's an entrance when you take, come in, into the field, take the sidewalk down, like towards the pavilion.
The side, the new sidewalk.
Right there, next to the, like the jungle gym area.
Yeah.
So that one there, that's the main one that can be kept open.
Right.
So the one next to the bathroom, we can, like, you know, close, like, do that suggestion. Other one that we had, we had open while they were working on the pavilion.
Okay, whatever you guys think is best.
And, and the last that I have is this circle down here at South and East Railroad Avenue. I talked to Matt, actually, when we first put that in, um, the engineer was Larry Siler, and, um, I had asked a question back then about the, um, longevity of, um, what is that, painted on or a dye in there, those bricks where they made the circle?
Yeah, it's, it's like a stain.
Yeah, and he, he is, at the time, said it was something new that was out that he really didn't know. It's been out for several years, but as he said, it could last two years, it could last ten years, but it's been there quite a while, but now it's turning white.
Yeah, it's been, I looked up the original contract for that. It, it was put in in fifteen. So I, I tried to track that, them down. Unfortunately, that company went out of business. I was able to find a company, uh, Laurel Asphalt, um, out near, uh, Seven Springs. And I actually have a meeting Thursday afternoon. The guy's gonna meet me on site and take a look at it. It's probably not anything that we can get done this year.
Right.
But we can get it lined up for next year, depending on the cost of it.
Right, and, and I mean, I would strongly advise the board, because it looks so nice, you know, colored that circle over there, but in only case, uh, it's just faded out. It did last us, uh, what, six years? You know, with salt and plowing and everything, it just wore down, but it's something that would, um, contribute to the beauty of the town. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Police Chief's report is next.
Good evening, everyone. This is for the month of September. We received a hundred and sixty-six complaints. Total, uh, crimes reported were twenty-seven. Crimes cleared was twenty-six. We had four arrests. Total code summaries issued was one, total vehicle summaries issued was seventeen, eleven borough code summaries and seventy-eight borough parking tickets. Our revenues, magistrate's fines collected was six hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Borough's fines and fees collected was four hundred and five dollars, seventy-five dollars in police reports purchased. Municipal fines is five dollars and thirty-two cents, for total fines and fees collected is one thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the parking permit fees was a, a hundred and eighty dollars. If somebody has any questions about anything.
I have, uh, just a statement to say, this, this past week, I had somebody stop me that's near the elementary school that said there's been, um, a big property for an open field next to the school. Somebody's been camping out overnight.
And
And it's something I just wanna bring to your attention, make sure you were aware if you didn't already know.
Yeah, I was aware of it. Last night, I happened to be working midnight shift. Um, I saw the tent out there. I went to the tent and nobody was in the tent. I unzipped it, looked in the tent, and it was kids, uh, like blankets and stuff in there. So I think kids are, are going out there and playing in the tent during the day, and they're just not taking it down.
This person thought there were adults sleeping overnight, so I just wanted
That's what I was told too, and I understand that, but I'm just telling you from what I found last night. And I think what they saw was somebody taking down the tent, an adult taking the tent down the next day. Now, whether that's the kid's tent and dad came and took the tent down, cause it was too close to the roadway, cause it's moved way back in the back, more towards the houses than that by the roadway. But that was just my own, you know, from what I saw last night.
Whose property is that, that's?
I believe that belongs to the apartment complex there.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll keep an eye on it, though.
Oh, yeah.
It was, uh, brought to my attention that it's there early, and they just wanted me to see if they, uh, didn't feel comfortable approaching it, so I just wanted
I don't know, I, I, I approached it last night.
Thank you.
There was nobody in there. Like I said, it was kids' blankets and stuff like that in there. But we will keep an eye on it. I'll pass it on to the other night shift officers that make the most work.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, next was, uh, Mr. Lovell with the EMS report.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm sorry, my voice is shot today, so. Month of September, we added a total of three five calls. Eight ALS, twelve BLS, six patient refusals, three left assists, two cancellations. Four post calls and a year date, three hundred and twenty-fourth of August.
Anybody have any questions about the EMS report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next uh, will be Mr. Pitch, please.
Thank you. The first item is first street reconstruction. Uh, the work up there is complete. As I said, that there's a couple of minor items remaining, so we're holding retainage on the project. So under new business, item A, there is a motion to approve submitting to the CFA for. Processing of the grant payment. Uh, we'll be requesting a hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, when we do receive that back from the CFA, we'll then make the payment. Um, of that seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents will be local share. And that will come out of the liquid fuels account. Uh, I sent another email to the county asking on the, the uh. The status of the, the Four Street demos. They didn't get back to me yet, so I'll keep in touch with them on that. Uh, the Cribbs Field project, uh, that is, there's a, under new business, item B. Uh, there is for a uh, submission to the CFA for a reimbursement. Give me while I find it. Uh, we'll be submitting for. Uh, thirty thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents. Uh, when we receive that back, we'll make a total payment of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight to the contractor. That still has retainage and there's still some miscellaneous items uh, remaining such as the electronic marquee sign. Um, we're looking at possibly some additional trash cans. Uh, and then Christine and I were talking about it. We're looking at possibly getting a locksmith in to see. What our options are for electronic locks or keypad locks or something like that. Um, all said and done right now, after, after the marquee sign, we'll still have about five to six thousand dollars left of the grant. So we wanna maximize that. So we, we do have some room to add in locks or something like that. So uh, I'll keep everyone up to the speed on that.
Thanks.
Um. I sent a, a, a letter to Jet Jack requesting a schedule for the work on First Street. That's the sanitary lining up there. I'm just waiting to hear back on them. The CDVG twenty-twenty-one, those projects, um, the Wildwood Culver. That's out the bid currently. Bid opening's October twenty-ninth with the cog. Uh, and then I'll have that prepared for the next meeting for the low bidder to be awarded.
Through, was that point number six, Matt?
Yes.
I have a question about the timeline and wanted to note also on Church Street. Um, with the demolition, if they could be aware of the hillside debris. Of the gutters and possibly PVC pipes, whatever it is, you see it when the leaves drop. If they could also remove those from the property or just toss them outside. As a part of that project for demolition.
So those one, the only one, I'm sorry, that I realized that that wasn't the clearest. Uh, the only one of the CBD twenty-twenty-ones that were awarded through the um, the funding was the Wildwood Culver.
So the other demos are, are not on here anymore?
Correct, but we did apply for those under the, the Act one fifty-two demos. Uh, and then we also reapplied under the, the twenty-twenty-two. Um, item ten on my report there, we've reapplied for them under there as well.
Thank you.
And then lastly, I have. Under new business, it'll be item C. It's just two motions to. Uh, move forward with applying for the GEDTF grant applications. They, they would, there's two applications, alley reconstructions and park improvements. These were the same projects that we applied for a year ago under the CITF and were unsuccessful with. Uh, we just kind of revitalized them, touched them up a little bit, but in essence, they're still uh, mostly the same project. Uh, that would be applied for at the end of October here. Uh, and then from, from there, we would find out probably around July, uh, if they were awarded or not.
Okay, um. Thank you, Mr. Pitch. I just have one question. Your motion, I think you're missed uh, for item B.
B.
Um, what is the amount that's gonna be approving to, to pay?
So the total amount that uh, the invoice that incurred is thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The CFA reimburses thirty thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents. And then let me do the math real quick here. And the local share of that payment would be five thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
Okay. But in the one for the first street reconstruction. We, if you, we're paying a hundred and seventy-six and?
The total, total what we will owe to the contractors, the two, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty cents. The borough will receive a check from the CFA for a hundred, some hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two and fifty-eight cents.
Okay.
And then we will have to add seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents to that.
So when we initially pay it, we initially pay two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars?
We won't, we won't pay until we receive the funds from the CFA.
Oh, okay, good.
So when we make the payment, it will, it will be for two fifty-two, but only seventy-five will actually be out of the borough as a cap.
Got it. And we can use liquid fuels for that.
Correct.
Great.
And I already have that all approved through Pendon, so we're good to go there.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for Mr. Pitch from anybody? Okay, moving on to, let's see here. Uh, Mr. Alexander.
Thank you. Items to uh, report on first is uh, liquor license transfer. We did. Hold a public hearing with regard to potential liquor license transfer from Robinson Township into the Borough of Verona. Uh, at the Giant Eagle uh, location. That resolution is on the uh, new, new business agenda. Or later on in the meeting. Uh, that hearing occurred at six-thirty today. Uh, at six o'clock today, we held an executive session. Uh, to discuss collective bargaining issues and other contractual items. I just wanted to let the board, remind the board that the Palm Fall uh, hearing. At Judge DeLuca's is still on for October fourteenth. At ten-thirty AM, somebody had reached out to me to see if the judge was allowing members of the public in. They did contact the ju- judges chambers and uh, was advised that they did not think so. But that they would uh, ask the judge and uh, get back to me. So I'm waiting for a call back on that issue and I'll, I'll let everybody know. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that uh, with regard to the community garden. And, and all the positive press that it's been uh, garnering, I did get a, a call from Nina Monroe. Uh, who had read the, the, the things in the uh, read the articles in newspaper and everything. And she just wanted to remind me that her family is looking forward to uh, some sort of a celebration and a plaque for. Basically donating, even though we filed eminent domain, they basically donated that property to the borough and are looking forward to that celebration. So that's all I have to report on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, our borough secretary Christine Derunk. Take it away.
All right. Um, so the first thing I just, just a couple of announcements. The office, the borough office, just the administrative side is going to be closed on November third and fourth. So that I can attend a conference regarding Alka-San. And I just wanted to say thank you to council for being so supportive of me undertaking these professional development opportunities. Um, but it does mean because I'm the only one in the office that the borough office will be closed. Uh, feel free to send an email. I'll respond when I'm back. Um, as was already discussed, the fire department relief check was. Uh, funds were received and paid out. And then as part of that process, there's a form that must get um, filed. With the auditor general and that has been filed. The Act two oh five declaration was also filed. The Act two oh five declu- declaration also gets filed with the auditor general. Um, and this form. Is related to um, the municipal pensions, both for the uniform and non-uniform uh, personnel. And what this form allows is our um. Our subcontractors, our vendors, I should say, PMRS for the non-uniform side. And Mock and Hop Benefits Group on the uniform side to have access to the information that they're gonna need. To continue through with the pension process. So it's just something we need to do. It's been filed. Um, the next thing, it's another FYI, the uh, third quarter. PMRS filings were mailed in and again, that's for the non-uniform pensions, so we're caught up on that. Um, another item, Nancy touched on this. This, there are updates to this um, agenda format, again, in the hopes of making the meetings a little bit shorter. And also to um, you know, just sort of work toward that whole concept of, of one council. And so just kind of shifting things around a little. It's a, is a work in progress, so feedback is welcome. And um, and we just ask for. Uh, well, I ask for council and mayor's patience um, as we work through a new format. And also for the public to just, um, you know, bear with us as we figure out a way to streamline the meetings and, and maybe make these things shorter. Um. The next item are administrative lessons learns, lessons learned. There have been some growing pains and administrative lessons learned with respect to park rentals. Um, and I wanted to thank Parks and, the Parks and Rec Committee for uh, a chance to present a potential new electronic solution. That would eliminate the potential for double bookings. I'm sure Janet, you'll be talking about this. This looked like one of your items, so I'm not gonna steal your thunder on that. But I did want to thank um, that committee for giving me the opportunity to um, to speak on that. Uh, the next item is the Ford interceptor is sold. It's gone. It was picked up last week. So that's exciting. We have the check in hand. Um, just wanted to provide an update on that. Um, another quick update, we did have the phone system upgraded. So if you call the borough and you're used to pressing six to get to me, I am now three. So you should actually listen to the options if you call because they have changed.
I did that this morning, pressed six.
I know, right on the other phone.
Who'd you get?
Nobody. So then I had to go back and listen.
Another, um, it's just a, a quick update. All of this was emailed around. We did receive the proposal from um, Hosack Spect. To perform the twenty-twenty-one audit of the borough's financials. Um, this was emailed a few weeks ago whenever it came in. The estimate is between eight thousand and ten thousand dollars. Um, and the audit would be performed by Peter Ventery, again, who did the twenty-twenty audit. That is gonna be um, in the action item section, but hopefully y'all had a chance to review that and decide. Whether you would like Mr. Ventery to be our auditor again. Then I wanted to provide, we're really flying through this. This is exciting. All right. Next, we have an update on the Universe contracts. Um, for those of you that tune in regularly, you may recall that um. We're spending a fair amount of money. On uniform, uh, a uniform contract for DPW personnel as well as. For um, our facilities services, which are basically the floor mats located throughout um, the borough building. And um, there will be a shift, which will be an action item related to. The uh, uniforms with respect to Universe, that contract is going to be terminated and will be going to. Um, an annual clothing allowance, which we'll discuss in the action items. And that will come at a savings to the borough and um, also be better for the DPW personnel. Um, for lots of different reasons. And the contract for the floor mats, um, we're currently paying. Two hundred and thirty-five dollars a month for the floor mats and um, these rags that DPW uses. Um, and so that contract has been renegotiated. Once we get, I get approval tonight, then I will sign this tomorrow. And the new cost per month. Will be forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. So that's a significant savings. It amounts to like twenty-two hundred dollars a year saved on floor mats. Um, so that's pretty exciting. That's a big win. And then the only item I have that actually requires some real discussion from you all. Is related to the cameras. So if you look in your packet, there's a two-sided sheet. Um, the front of it says camera for council chief, or some points for consideration. And the back side has a grid. And I wanted to um, thank Dave Matlin for his efforts in providing a whole host of information to me that I was able to include in this grid. And I also wanted to thank Tim Long, who's in the audience tonight, for providing the information regarding the camera. Um, that he brings um, on a, a twice a month basis for um, for these meetings. So if you look at that grid, um, there, there's a pretty big range of options here. In terms of price, um, you can see they range from, you know, a hundred and forty dollars all the way up to like fourteen hundred dollars. Sort of depending on what we're looking at. And some of the questions that I just posed to you all. Is how important is it that we have a camera on the dais that would allow? For zooming in on the speaker and showing their face? And how much money is the borough willing to pay for that kind of feature? And then um, the other, to me, even larger question. Relates to some of the things that our consultant Susan Hockenberry had mentioned in a, in an executive session once upon a time. That some councils choose to um, get off the dais and sit around a table for. Business meetings to, or sorry, for um, workshop meetings to encourage like real dialogue and. You know, cause even now, I'm like speaking to the public. I'm not really speaking to council because I'm just projecting outward. And so the idea would be. You know, get council around the table and having those discussions face to face to really, you know, increase communication and, and that kind of thing. So if, if getting off the dais for workshop meetings is something that council is interested in, then um. You know, that's a different kind of technology solution than sitting up here, just because. Sitting up here, we have these microphones. We have this, like, it's just, it's just a different setup. And I don't know if you're interested in that. And if so, you know, what do you want to do about that? Um. Or do we just do a total technology audit and, you know, maybe get a less expensive solution right now that works and is good enough? And then we figure out what's, what's the total deal? Like, how long is this projector on the ceiling going to interface with? You know, whatever computers we have, since it doesn't talk to all computers at this point and, you know, so on and so forth. So. I'll stop talking and let you all hash that out.
Do any of these options, I appreciate the homework on this because there's a lot on here. Do any of these options require a service beyond just the hardware? Or uh, anything beyond just the cameras? For instance, the, the meeting out piece or the three sixty. Are, are these things that you could navigate with just the laptop and like move it, or do you have to buy a system?
You mean like software?
Uh, both software and like a, maybe a monthly fee or annual fee to use? Or is it just simply a, a camera?
I believe they're just cameras.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any, any monthly fees. The monthly fees would come into whatever meeting software we use, whether it's Zoom, Google Meet. Or whatever, um, which is, is another, that's maybe a separate discussion. So yeah, there's no, these are just standalone cameras. Um, but what I would like to point out or add to, you know, Christine did a great job of explaining this. Um. The uh, I think the, the Meeting Al Pro, maybe the only one, but that one. It has a built-in microphone. It does a three sixty video and it's good for setting on the table, like a conference room table or like a table like Christine described. If we were to change the workshop format, you can't really separate out the, the audio from the video. Like right now, we have a separate video from the audio feed that's in a, built into the room. So the meeting hour wouldn't, we, we, it would be a standalone thing, audio and video. These other cameras we would use. With our current setup, we would use as video only, plug it into the laptop, use the audio existing on the dais and in the room. So um. You know, a, again, that um, that's something to factor in here. And I'll just add that I, I like the idea of, of going with something. Very inexpensive now that, that continues what we've been doing. It seems to work. Um, adequately and then doing. adequately and then doing some sort of an audit or just looking comprehensively at, okay, we have the projector, we have these days, Mike, we have soundboard back there. You know, what, you know, what's, what are we doing? What are we doing going forward? What do we need in the room to continue having meetings, especially since we've kind of switched to this hybrid format that's, you know, it's a lot different than two years ago. And the, the technology we have is, is, you know, it's getting to, you know, it's going to be a little bit outdated. So rather than spend a lot of money on a camera now and we don't know how we're going to use it going forward. I, I think using, you know, going with like, one of the more, the cheaper options, either the hundred and forty dollar camera or the three hundred and fifty dollar camera. What allows to continue doing meetings, self-sufficiently, adequately while we may take a longer term strategic look at what, what our needs are. But that's just my, my thought.
Is there any way this could actually fit in the budget for what we're adding to for the inside and outside of our building? Because I know our camera system here that we have. Can we just add another camera that would be in this room then? Or is that completely separate, different?
So you're talking about the security cameras. So the security cameras need to be on a separate secure video server for the, only the police can access. The camera in here needs to be something that we can easily transmit out to the public and, and to the projector here. So I, I don't think.
Yeah, primarily the meeting features so we can be present with people not here and also to archive for, for minutes and to reference in the future.
Yeah, yes, that we can, we can put something on YouTube for the public to view after the fact and so that we have the live stream. I, I wouldn't want to mix this with the, with security cameras because there's, there's too much going on there.
I guess more of my question with that was the funding, the dollars there for it. So I don't know if that's
Oh, if that could.
Overlapping or not, or required, but there's money that was provided. And I don't know if this is an extension of that or if it's just separate and different.
Yeah, we, we may be able, I don't know, Matt, if you know offhand or if that's something we can look into, that, that's, that's a possibility.
Because we have our entrance, we have the, you know, the safety up or the security or the parking lot camera. Uh, and if we had it inside, it might just be an enhancement to what we.
There was already a line item for a meeting room camera.
Is there?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I, I can't remember the exact amount. It was a thousand or fifteen hundred.
Okay.
But that kind of, that all kind of falls in how much wants to be spent on other cameras and the other line items that, that's, it could very easily be part of that grant. But it depends on where the funds are spent on the other line items as well.
I'd just like to chime in here. I, I like the idea that you're outlining, Dave. Because I know for one, the, the guy who came and fixed our HDMI, John from pianos and stuff. I think that they would be able to come in and do a, a whole overall audit of what we have. And we could find other companies that would be willing to come in. But while we're waiting for all that, for the sake of just getting a camera for what we need for now. I'd just like to go with the hundred and forty because the other one seems to have the exact same things according to this, you know, properties according to this chart. But it might need an adapter. So why not go with the one that, what we know works? It's only a hundred and forty plus tax, whatever it is, but and then, and then we can have, take our time and then figure out exactly what we want going forward. Give us time to decide about this new workshop format if we want to do that and so on and so forth. So I, I'd be interested in just getting, getting the and or cam quarter for now. Does anybody has an idea? You know, different from that?
I, I agree with that. The only other thing I'll say is that what you get, because some people may be wondering, okay, what do you get for a thousand dollars versus a hundred and forty dollars? And what Christina alluded to is, is do we want some kind of camera that'll zoom in on people at the dais? While they're talking, that's what some of these, the Logitech, like the Meeting Owl. Um, even the huddle cam, I think they have some sort of feature that we could position it back there, up there, and it would automatically pan tilt and zoom to whoever's speaking, which could be a really nice feature. We just don't know. I mean, I don't think any of us have tested that out. And, and maybe we would need more time to try to test that out and see if that is a good fit for a longer term, you know, room, full room technology solution. But I think that, you know, in the immediate term, you know, just to get something that's, that's working. I think, again, it would take more time to do that evaluation, to figure out which one may be the best fit for us as far as a more advanced camera. But that's that, that to me is the big difference in these prices is that, that feature.
So, um, unless anyone has any more comments to make on this. I believe this is on the list of our action items somewhere.
It is.
Okay, so that when we get to that point, we can presumably have a motion to get that particular camera and a cord. We need a cord too.
Yeah, that's like twenty bucks.
And maybe we should get a tripod since we keep using yours.
Yeah, it's like twenty bucks too.
Yeah, okay. So, so, you know, we might be spending two hundred dollars total. Okay, that's.
That's the end of my report.
Excellent.
Have a question on the phones. I know at one point in time it listed to leave messages for members of council and the mayor, you could do so. Is that still a feature?
It is a feature. It's been updated to include the people who are actually sitting on the dais. And, um, and the way it said up is that the, the messages should automatically forward to your email as a, um, not a transcript, doesn't have voice to text capabilities, but it'll just be an audio file of the actual message that the person left.
Okay, thanks for that.
Sure thing.
Okay, uh, next is Mr. Warren for Lookworks.
Yes, just the one line I had about here, just to share that we're assessing priorities for budgeting. Had about a two and a half hour meeting with Ray and Christine and, and Dave last week, I believe it was. So a lot of these things blend in together. But that's what I had to report first.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Matlin.
Yeah, thank you. Just continuing that, um, I have two items. The, the first is the twenty twenty-two budget update. So Christine is, is diligently plugging along on preparation of the budget document. Going forward, not just this year, but annually, she's going to be the keeper of the budget document. Um, you know, it's something that, that will be reviewed within the finance committee. Um, we'll discuss for, for input and then eventually review with all of council and the public. But you know, it's something that previously, you know, members of council, myself and others were, were working on. So we've kind of transitioned that over, over to Christine. We have been gathering between Christine and, and the finance committee, we've been gathering estimates for some of the budget items, uh, budget item expenses. And we will be holding some sort of a public budget workshop later this fall. We don't have a date finalized yet. We want to get a little bit closer to, to know that we're going to be ready, but we do have a little bit of time still. Um, and the other item is just to, to continue what, what Joey was saying about the the, the meeting we had last week. We did have a really good meeting about the, the capital plan on October fifth with the finance committee. And the focus of that, you know, we've been talking about the five-year capital plan and wanting to get that going. But um, right now with, with everything that Christine has on our plate, we all have on our plate as far as the budget. We're kind of tabling that for the time being and we're focusing just on twenty twenty-two as far as capital expenses, because we do need to, you know, make decisions about that for the twenty twenty-two budget. So we reviewed, we, we had an entire list, wish list of basically everything that's come to light from council or mayor or, or Mr. Pitch on, um, capital improvements. And those, a-again, you may remember that we're defining capital as anything with a life expectancy of five years or more. Or, and that costs five thousand dollars or more. So that, that's just to kind of separate out from maybe the, the smaller items that DPW might buy or the police might buy versus the larger items that, that are that are bigger and last longer. So we, we had a really, really good list. We had a good discussion. We, we put together priorities um, and tried to assign estimated costs. So we're, I think we're pretty close to having that plugged into the, the budget. The only thing I'll mention, I know Matt had a couple of things in his report. That, that asphalt circle, you know, the pavilion, if you do find, uh, amounts, cost for that, uh, let us know. And we'll be able to decide, you know, put that into the priority list and at least have it as part of the budget and capital discussion. And then same thing with the, the, any grants, any new grants that are coming up or projects that are coming up. Just so we can keep track of that and prioritize. Because we, we do have a lot of things that, that are likely going to be, you know, we've said, hey, these are lesser priorities. We need to push these to next year, the year after. Just be mindful that any new projects or new grants that have matches, that, that'll get tacked on as well. And then you know, we only have so much bandwidth and throughput in the office and
Yeah.
so much funds available. So that's, that's about it on that.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Because I know there's been some feedback some, from some residents as well about, um, when we do have our wish list, we also have to consider the price and availability for some things because I know there are a number of things that we are wanting to paint. And I know there's a shortage for some paints or the availability. So um, as we do build this and we're able to, to tackle these, if they're available for order, then we have a shopping list to go in and purchase those things when they are more available for some of those.
Yeah, that's a good point because there are a lot of supply chain issues and a lot of different things right now. So, thanks. That's all I have on my reports. Uh, does anyone have any questions or?
Resident just asked us to budget for toilet paper for next year while it's still here.
Never know.
We, we can add toilet paper and milk, but it won't be under capital.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is Trish Reddix Showalter.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanted to note that the ordinance committee meeting, how their last meeting on Monday, September twentieth. Our next meeting will be this coming Monday, October eighteen. Um, the main discussion item was the comprehensive fee schedule resolution, which we also touched on at the last workshop meeting. And we have moved for tonight's meeting under action items. All I have for tonight.
Does anybody have any questions, uh, comments about the revised fee resolution? I mean, in terms of discussion?
I, I did make a note. We received an update from solicitor a little bit before six this evening. There are multiples and I don't know pages. One of the versions is two pages, two, well, two-sided. The other one's singular for single pages. But there were, um, and the version we had before six o'clock tonight, there was, um, one version that the, the prices are not the same. Or section eighteen, section eighteen, section fifteen, sixteen. So some of them were out of order. So if you're looking to any of these, please pay attention to the prices and the order. So solicitors provided version tonight is what I was saying.
The missing numbers.
Correct. So, um, as we do take a look at these, uh, just so we're all comfortable and aware of what the pricing schedule is and, and the order. Don't use one of these provided prior to six o'clock tonight.
That I passed out that has the diagonal.
Yeah, and it's one-sided. It's one-sided. Yeah.
The page six and seven are different on six different items.
Alright. So there, there'll be another chance to ask questions when we come to the question. Okay, thank you. Um, is that it? Do you have more stuff, Trish?
No, I'm unusually quiet tonight.
Thank you. Hopefully my break of record. Um, Mr. Suchevich.
How much? Eleven fire calls for the month of September. No problems up there. I've heard nothing from the police. Next year is going to be a contractor, I believe, for the place.
Were you able to connect on the generator as a basis for the price and service that we have?
I, I got part, part of it, but I'm waiting for the vendor to give back.
For workshop maybe later this time.
Well, hopefully. Yeah, I, I tried and it just didn't happen.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to put fire chief report back, put the top there.
Oh, I, I did that on purpose so that other people could leave and not stay. I figured Ray was stuck here all night, so I put him down there. I moved the other people up so they, like chief and, and Jamie's.
Okay.
Oh, I can move him back if that's, if that's where you want me to move fire back up.
Yeah. Uh, whatever, we can discuss that in another time. Mrs. Loubel, you're next.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Board, they had their meet, um, meeting October fifth via Zoom. It started six thirty. All were present except for Jim Ashbaugh. Christine Drum, she started off our meeting with a presentation on a calendar for so we won't be double booking. It's something we can just plug in right with. With the calendar. With the calendar. So, um, anybody can look at it, um, and see what is there, what has been booked. What needs, you know, the police department, uh, the office, whoever. And if anything needs changed, it's very easy to maneuver. So hopefully that'll help with confusion on overbooking, double booking, what's going on, who's, who's where and when. So it was very, very limited there. Let's see. We are in the process of updating park permits. There's been some discussion of maybe like you know, dividing some of the parks, you know, for different permits, like right out here, rural park. If somebody wants to use one part of park, the other path could be available depending on the usage or whether the need is if more and more people are request, requesting use of the park. And I think this past year has been the most where people from the public have been requesting rural park. And, uh, which hasn't been done in the past. It's usually been a community park, but people are for graduation parties, you know, different things like that. So was, has been some talk on that and also what the fees may be for the permits. There is a request that we will be making a motion for. We do need a new popcorn machine. The one that we have that we use for the movies is, is, has been shot, no longer working order. Also, Parks and Rec, they would like to be present for the trunk or treat that will be held after, um, the farmer's market on October twenty ninth there, or I'm sorry, the twenty eighth. They're requesting if the borough from their, the Parks or Budget could be, you know, eventually some money donated toward candy for trunk or treat. And also they would like to purchase a bin for storage, like a ten dollar bin from Walmart. So we, I will be talking about that new business. Winter, winterization for PRIX. Um, we were saying PRIX field is to be closed for the winter, um, November twenty ninth. That'll be twenty eighth will be the last day that'll be used for football. So we can have the crew turn the water off at the pavilion and winterize as needed. Removal of the Portageons. We would like to keep a Portageon though down at Riverbank Park. Or pickleball, whoever uses that, because there weren't any facilities down there at that time. I'd just like to make it mention also, I did receive a call last evening after the fact I wasn't home. Um, I guess there were, RA did have baseball last night and the bathrooms were not open. And the Portageons apparently were very, were a mess. So somebody had really done a mess in there and they weren't cleaned up. And, uh, I felt bad. They said they did call the non-police number several times. Uh, officer did drive by several times, but nobody came to, locked the door there. So now that the cameras are working, I would say for, for right now, daily unlock the bathrooms.
What time do you want the bathrooms open and closed? I mean, do you want them open all day?
They can be open all day, you know, when they come and open up the gates. They can go down, open up the bathrooms and in the evening when they close up the gates, make sure they're locked.
Yeah, and, uh, tell RA if they do need to get in touch with an officer to call nine one one.
Okay.
Because a lot of times, uh, the six oh three four number, sometimes they forget to forward it to the, uh, the phone that they have in the car.
Okay.
So nine one one is for everything. It's just not for emergencies.
Right.
Right. And also on the, uh, the, um, trunk or treat that, uh, my department will be participating in that. And Christine, I'll get with you on, um, you know, the money as far as buying the candy. I'll, I would, I'll turn in a receipt. They're going to get it for the chambers too.
So Matt, you're getting it for chambers, parks and recreation and the police department?
No, just for the police department. The chambers, we fill bags for the kids. We have an annual walk around time and I always get the candy. So I might as well just get it for police department too. Probably twenty bucks, twenty five dollars.
But with the winterization of cribs field, we would like to keep the playground open all year like we did last year as well. So keep the parks open. So right now, so mild out, you know, maybe a mild winter, it can be accessible for the kids to use. That's all I have.
So I have a question, Janet. Well, I just wanted to mention, I think trunk or treat is from four to six P M on that day. So the farmer's market, I think, would still also be happening at the same time.
Right.
And could you give me more detail on what your purchase request is going to be for again and how much approximately each item?
Sure. The popcorn machine, it was looking at a good deal, done at Restaurant Depot was for three hundred and eighty dollars. Looking for a hundred dollars towards the candy for trunk or treats and ten dollars for a storage bin.
For a storage bin, you mean just like.
Like a tote.
A tote. Okay, ten dollars for a tote. Okay. So four hundred and ninety dollars is what you're going to be asking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mrs. Lalbo? All right. And wonderful Mrs. Provenza, you are next.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. We'll start with newsletter. Days are marching by and we are accepting articles and ads. For our January, February, March edition of the newsletter. And everything will be due in on Wednesday, December first. So if you can get it into us sooner, we'd be very happy. Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce. Will be holding their next meeting on Tuesday, November the, excuse me, October the nineteenth at six thirty here in the Borough Building. And as Dave mentioned, we're going to fill the bags of candy to give out on the day of the parade. Halloween parade is going to be on Saturday, October thirtieth, and it will be at eleven A M. Starting here at the Borough Building and that's when we'll give the children their bags of candy and treat bags. Trick or treat will be on Sunday, October thirty first from six to eight P M. Next item, Historical Society. Speaker this month is going to be Gary Rogers from the Oakmont Historical Society. And he's going to be speaking on the Willow's nightclub. So that should be quite interesting. And also, we would like to extend an invitation to everyone that is open to the public. And it's a really wonderful night to come to. You just get so much information from yesterday. And we do invite all of you. And if you have any questions, please feel free to call Rhoda. At four one two eight two eight three six zero seven. And she'll be glad to answer any questions if you have. Next item, Twin Borough Ministries. Our next community dinner is going to be held on Wednesday, October twenty seventh. From four thirty to six thirty. And this one will be hosted by Joy Barnes and her friends. And I believe they are from Oakmont. And this will again be a grab and go dinner. And a couple of other things that I've been asked to announce from the Methodist Church. The ladies at the church are doing their famous homemade apple dumplings again. And. First one was, well, the second one, excuse me, will start tomorrow, Wednesday, October thirteenth. And then the next will be the twentieth and the twenty seventh of October. And they'll also again have the cinnamon twirl cookies. Price of the apple dumplings is five dollars each. And the cookies are five dollars for a dozen. And now we have a new addition from the girls at the church, the ladies at the church. They are going to be making homemade chicken noodle soup, navy bean soup, more broccoli cheddar soup. So tis the season for soup. And if you want some good homemade soup, they'll have it there. Prices are going to be four dollars for a pint or seven dollars for a quart. Before I go to ALON, I just wanted to mention one thing real quick. I got notification from Senator Jay Costa. And they're going to do a free shedding shredding event and that'll be on Saturday, October the twenty third. It will be from ten A M till noon. And the location will be the Woodland Hills High School. And that is at twenty five fifty Greensburg Pike in Churchill. Zip code one five two two one, if you want to put that in your G P S. There will be a limit of three boxes per car. And also they're going to be expecting items for the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. So if you feel in your heart, you'd like to donate to that, they would more than gladly accept it. It is not mandatory. You can still do shredding, but they will also be doing the Pittsburgh Greater Community Bank Food Bank. And my last item is ALON, Alligating League of Municipalities. And they are going to be holding a public works training and that's going to be on Thursday, October the twenty eighth. From seven thirty A M till two thirty P M. And it's going to be held at the Chadwick Wexford. This is a free educational event and it's open to all public works department employees. It will include a free breakfast and lunch. They'll provide to all the people. And for any questions or to register, you need to call four one two two six one twenty five twenty one. If you have any questions or comments, I will be glad to take them at this time. And if not, this concludes my reports. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Cog Report, anything?
Just that the, as I mentioned last meeting, the. The contribute, potential contribution to lower valley. Ambulance service. I'm awaiting to hear from. Tom Banekia Cog about when we're going to have that meeting with the the member municipality. So I don't have anything else at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so here's something new. We have, I don't know, thirteen or fourteen motions to be made. We've basically discussed most of, most of them. As far as I understand. So Matt, I think the first three are yours.
Yep.
If you want to just review briefly what it is and someone can make the first and second motion.
Motion A would just be for the submission to the C F A for the reimbursement for the First Street reconstruction. And then once we would receive that hundred and seventy six thousand dollars back, then we would make the full payment of the two fifty two to the contractor.
I make that motion.
Okay, first by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Suchovich. Any other questions or comments about that? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Item B would be for the submission for the fourth pay estimate for the Cribs Field. We would be submitting for thirty six thousand two hundred and fifty eight. The C F A will be reimbursing the borough. Thirty thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents. And then we'd make the full payment again, once we received the money from the C F A.
I make that motion.
Okay, first by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Suchovich. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, quick question, Matt. Do you know how much retainage after this pay estimate, how much retainage will be left still with without?
Currently, we have ten thousand four hundred and twenty three dollars retainage and that's with the approval of this invoice. And we still have right, right around twenty two thousand left on the ground. But we still have to pay for the the marquee sign.
Okay, so the ten thousand is a total, that's a running total of retainage, right? For this pay, okay. And do you think, I know that you have a punch list and there's some items like the toilets and other things you discussed, you feel like that's enough? That retainage is enough to cover what's, you know, what's left that needs to be corrected?
Correct. So the the toilets, we're working with Oakmont Water on those. Those aren't really, it's part of the punch list in the sense to to correct them.
Yeah.
But the the issue itself stemmed from when we converted from porcelain equipment to stainless steel equipment. The issue is when you have porcelain equipment that has tanks on the toilets, much like a residential one, it works with gravity. When you switch over to the stainless steel equipment, it works off of pressure. So right now, Oakmont is providing sixty PSI there. Each toilet itself takes about twenty five PSI to flush. So if you have a sink in two toilets at the same time, they don't function fully. So Oakmont Water is reviewing if they can open a valve more and give us more pressure that way. If not, I've already talked with the contractor. They do create pressure increase, pressure valves that we can install one in the the maintenance room and boost the pressure that way.
Okay. No, that's great. I just wanted to make sure. I know, maybe that's not so much an issue with the the work or the contractor. But I just wanted to make sure that any of the outstanding punch list items or anything that's incomplete that they would owe us. I just didn't, I just want to make sure we were not, you know, paying beyond what, you know what I mean? Like that we still, like the retainage is there so that if something in this punch list goes wrong.
Correct.
We have a stick to hold against them.
Correct.
I just want to make sure we have a big enough stick. And I think you're saying yes.
Yeah, and I looked at everything other than what I meant. There's still a couple of the seams that he needs to get glue on or something like. He did try, but I I can see where there's still are a couple that are issued. Other than that, everything that was on the list, other than the the pressure with the toilets has been taken care of.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
In item C, there is just for the submission of the G E D T F grants. There would be two of them. One would be for the alley reconstructions and the other one would be for the park improvements.
Let me take a motion. Okay, first by Mr. Suchovich.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren. Any other questions or comments about submitting those grant applications? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, now we pass the baton to Christine.
Okay, the first thing is really a formality. There's a resolution. To approve the reduction in employee contributions pursuant to Act six hundred. This is something that the current contract that have with the police department does not require the officers to make a contribution to the pension plan. And so because it's less than five percent, meaning zero, then we just need to pass a resolution saying that, yes, we really are doing that. We just need to do this because it's in the contract.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, first by Mr. Suchovich, second by Mr. Matlin. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
The next is the motion to purchase a camera. And based on the conversation that we had earlier. It sounds like people want to purchase the Andor camera for a hundred forty dollars. A cord for about twenty bucks and a tripod, it's also twenty bucks or so. And if I'm incorrect, please correct me, but otherwise that's what seems to be on the table.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, first by Mrs. Provenza, second by Mr. Suchovich. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Next item, last meeting, we talked about having. Kelly generator come out and do the planned maintenance. And so we have that that agreement with them. They did come out. They found several things that need repair or replaced. And so I have a quote that was provided to you all for three thousand four hundred sixty five dollars and fifty cents. So three thousand four hundred sixty five, just to repeat that. And I would just need to approval to go ahead and schedule them and and make these needed repairs to the generator.
Second.
Okay, first by Mrs. Provenza, second by Mr. Suchovich. Any other questions or comments about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions I have is, we made an agreement with them. This has nothing to do with that agreement, right?
Correct. So that agreement.
That's just like the to be in it. So they find something more than than that we have heard before.
That's right. So so they already came out, the the planned maintenance agreement has two parts. There's like a major visit and then a minor visit. And so normally they do the minor first and the major, we flipped it because it's been a few years since the generator had been serviced. When they did that, that major server, that major inspection and servicing, they discovered. You know, I don't really know what these things are because I'm I'm not aging, but there are things wrong with it. And we just, we just need to get it fixed.
Did they do the P M on it? Did they do the oil and everything like that?
They did. They did. They were here. The end, not last week, but the end of the week before. They were out very quickly after we signed the contract.
This is all just exhaust stuff.
Is that a fair price?
So do I, I don't really know much about this, but I spoke to A J and he said that. Based on the brand of generator that we have and the kind of generator that we have. Kelly generator is the best option for servicing. In addition, they are the only. Dealer for this brand of generator in the area. And so with supply chain issues that are going on, they actually are able to get parts. More easily than other companies would be able to because they are, you know, a licensed dealer distributor. So to me, it seemed like this is probably the best option, given they know what they're doing. They know this machine and they can get parts.
The only thing I can suggest, maybe it, because this is sitting outside. If it's going to exhaust system because of maybe the weather, maybe build a little, like a little lean through or something eventually down the road. To to protect it from the weather. So something to look into down the road. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
The next item are two revisions to the Universe contract as we spoke about, but I just need to ask somebody to make that motion to. Revise our facility services contract to go from two hundred thirty five dollars a month to forty nine dollars and fifty cents per month. Knowing that we're entering into a five year agreement with Universe.
I'll make that motion.
First by Mr. Suchovich.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren. Any other questions or comments about this?
Thanks for finding the savings.
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passed. And number two there.
Part two of the Universe is just to terminate that uniform contract. So I would need a motion to, you know, cross that off the list and and terminate with Universe.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Lalbo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Suchovich. Any other questions or comments? I just have a question. Oh, no, I don't. I see it. Never mind. All those, any other questions or comments? No. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
The next item is a motion to establish the annual clothing allowance for the D P W personnel. And as discussed in executive session, we talked about three hundred dollars for twenty twenty one. To get the personnel, you know, clothed for the rest of the year in in uniforms. And then in subsequent years, going up to six hundred dollars. We discussed that the the guys would wear navy dickies and then. The the.
Green or orange.
The green or orange safety shirts.
Whichever they choose.
Yeah, whichever they choose.
I'll make that motion.
So, okay, first by Mrs. Provenza.
Second.
Second by Mr. Suchovich. Any other questions or comments on that?
Yes, my understanding that Christine raised the point that they would like to include boots in that allowance.
They mentioned they would, but that was not something that was determined to be how the borough would be.
They mentioned they would, but that was not something that was um determined to be how the borough would be moving forward.
Okay, so we will not include any footwear in that, that will strictly be clothing.
Well, I would think they could use their money however they want.
That's what I would propose.
So we talked about it again.
It just seemed like an easy morale boost for no additional cost, so I wanted to raise the point again.
I think it, the. My understanding of this is it's for clothes. Uh, if they can find a way to buy all the clothes that they need for this money. And have enough left over to buy a pair of boots if they want to, but we're not, we're not adding anything more for the boots.
This is in concert with the termination of the contract we're in.
Which did not include boots, right? So, so, so. Right to everybody.
We had decided that boots would not be included at this time.
But, if they, well, okay, so I see what you're saying. They get the money, they give us the receipt, it has to be for clothes, I think.
Like, you know, pants, short sleeve shirts, long sleeve shirts, warmer clothes for the winter, like hoodies and things of that sort.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, they can't angle by boots, but they can't use this money for that this year.
That's what we discussed.
Right, right. Okay. Uh, any other questions? Do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't remember if it was mentioned, but. We do, we're seeing a significant cost savings with the six hundred dollars per year. Because um the UniFirst, it was, I forget the exact numbers, one thousand. Some other, I don't know if, did you mention that earlier?
Yeah, it was like a thousand fifteen or something per person.
Person per year, so we're saving about at least four hundred dollars per person per year, so. Just want to make sure that that's clear to everyone.
That's another nice one, Christian.
Yeah, good, good attention.
And 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 does that include, when you say the one thousand, Christine, does that include all the extra little fees that UniFirst?
It does, I mean, that's just what we're required to pay.
Yeah.
By virtue of having a contract.
Yeah, it's not all clothing that's saving, some of it, we're saving the money because we're not having to pay the UniFirst fees.
And and the very expensive clothing.
Right, for little. Quality, okay, great, but it's both, is all I was saying.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, we still have a motion on the floor. Uh, first by Miss Provenza, second by Mr. Suchovich, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Put motion pass, we're on aye.
Okay, we're just cruising right along here. All right, so the next thing, um, this was sent out. Some time ago, Mock and Hop Benefits Group, which again. Is a consulting firm we work with for the police pension. Um, they have asked us whether or not we want to accept the actuarial assumptions. Which are then used in calculating the minimum municipal obligation each year. And we need to um. We need to either accept them, and then I can check the box and we can send this and sign it back. We can say we would like to have an analysis prepared that shows the twenty twenty-one valuation results. Under the twenty nineteen assumptions and the recommended assumptions, just to see how these changes would. Um, impact the MMO. If we want more information, it's a charge of six hundred dollars to do that analysis. Or we can um tell them we want somebody to contact us. I did provide the actuarial assumptions um for you to have looked through. And I spoke at length with um Carrie Troutman from Mock and Hop. And based on um her input in that conversation, I personally would say. The actuaries, actuarial assumptions are something that we should go with. And that an additional analysis for six hundred dollars is probably not um, not worth the money. But that's, that's my two cents after speaking with her. Um, certainly it's up for discussion.
So that would be option one you recommend?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend option one.
Unless there's any further discussion, would someone like to make a motion for option one?
I'll make a motion for option one.
Okay, uh, first by Mr. Such, the second by Mr. Warren for option one. Um, any other questions or comments?
I I'll just say that um. The the assumptions and that, you know, there's a lot of detail in the. Three or four pages that um Mock and Hop provided, and I think they've, they've. Done their diligence and and estimating the future. Um, occurrences or costs, like, I feel like that's a pretty, pretty safe bet to uh. To stick with their their recommended assumptions at this time, and something that they can always reevaluate, or we can ask them to reevaluate in future years if. If things change, so I I agree.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion pass.
All right, my last item. So the the last item, um, I'd mentioned earlier, we did receive the proposal for the audit of financial statements for the borough. Um, for the year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. This um was again a quote between eight thousand and ten thousand dollars, provided by Hostaxpect. Peter Ventary would perform the audit. Um, and so if we would like to hire Hostaxpect to perform the audit. Then we would need to um, you know, make that decision and and uh, and I can return the paperwork to them.
This is who you.
This is, yeah, this was the same, the same firm and the same person even who did it last year.
Twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, he did all of them, I think.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to go with Lock and Soft.
Okay. Okay, first by Mr. Suchovich. Second, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Provenza. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion pass. Okay, Kay is Trish Redd's XO, I believe.
I don't know if it's me or Craig.
One of you, it's fine with me, I don't care who it does.
Um, so presented before you is the revised, revised, revised updated resolution that the comprehensive fee schedule of the Roma. Do you have a timeline, most municipalities have them, but all these are easily located in one document and it can also easily be updated. Merely by resolution from time to time as needed. We evaluated all the questions and comments that were raised during the last workshop meeting and since then, and they have all been included. I think there may still be a couple of questions. At this time, if you would like to raise those. Or we can go through it.
No, let's not go through it one by one, um. But I guess my question is. Given um what Janet reported is summarizing our Parks and Rec meeting. That, that's uh, some of the detail there, uh, if we would decide to. Break it down with Pavilion and all that, however, I'm guessing that. I don't know, I don't know how much it takes to revise this resolution. I know it's better than having it be an ordinance. Um, so I'm not sure if it's worth holding this up. But just do it with the idea that the park permit fee is not exactly what we want it to be yet. That that is my one question. Um, and the other one comment, I guess I wanna. Be sure about the banner and sign permit. That is for a temporary type of sign. Not for a permanent sign like um that you have to get a zoning permit for and a building permit for. What I'm unclear about is something that's in between those two, like something that a business puts in their. Window or hangs out, like if you've seen pictures of little cute towns. That have signs hanging from above, like Oakmont has an upper robe. Um, so that to me is is a bit incomplete because. This is only for temporary signs and honestly. I have never, I don't even know that we have that actual permit. In the building, in the drawer, under permits for signs. I've never seen anybody pay twenty-five dollars for a temporary sign, so. I would say this is okay because there's many other ones in here that we need. But we need to look further into that and and into the parks and further detail down the road. But since it's a resolution, not an ordinance, I I'd be willing to be okay with that.
Is it, is that just for, that's just for hanging signs on public property, correct?
Yeah, and and there's a, there's a sticky wicket there. We've got a lot of signs hanging around town that, you know. We don't need to talk to, talk about right now, but it's just. No one has ever come to the office and I'm aware of and paid twenty-five dollars to have a temporary sign. As far as I'm aware.
We can pass this, if I'm not mistaken, and then just revise that section. Okay, that's what I thought.
I just want that to be on the record, um, you know, that those two things probably need a little more detail.
Uh, for the workshop meeting, my questions were about making sure, which I heard from a couple of people, that we are truly covering the cost and all of these, so we're not missing something, so that. Actual costs, advertising services and fees, as we went through, were not just what Palmer's done or what Oakmont has. What we'd like to do, but what it actually does cost. So let's try to talk to you about a number of these things earlier uh this evening. That's my main concern is that we're. You know, there's a number of things that we waive or we don't charge for, I don't wanna. Without completing this, pass something where it might be, we charge um comparable to another community, but we incur greater cost. Or the tone of the, the resolution is not what we want the tone of our community to be, to to provide that people do upgrade to their properties. And not pay a lot to put up a fence or improve a deck or put in a pool or whatever those things are. But there are communities that want to waive costs like curb cuts because they want people to get off the street, park in your driveways and create, you know, things that make our. Residential business space more viable. I just, I wanted to make sure that. The tone is one thing, that it's Verona and not just another community, because I'm still not clear that's. The measure is is definitely a peer community to us. Um, the other thing was just simply the the finance of it. I want to make sure we're covering all costs. So those two things are what I have in questions. Trisha sharing her copy of notes from last workshop meeting. I think we highlighted every line of it, and I just wanted to ask if any diligence is there that these costs have all been, I guess, triple checked.
Can you share screen that, screen share that?
Boy, Dan.
We don't want to get too deep into the weeds, and Joey, I hear what you're saying, I guess I'm not. Clear, um, like. I could be clear on specifically ones on here that you might be referring to.
Yes, everything highlighted from the workshop meeting here. I also had notes on, so I just want to make sure that, I know this is a business thing, so we're passing it. We had a very productive meeting last time, but I think a lot of the line-to-line questions. I I don't know that I see it, this is where we were looking to be answered. I know we've made plenty of notes there. I just want to make sure that we're confident that we've covered every real cost.
Well, I do know that I can see here for um. The zoning hearing, we increased the escrow to six hundred and fifty for a total of a thousand. Which is is much better.
And how much does that cost as an actual advertising?
It see, it depends, um, because, I mean, the advertising is slightly flexible. But, you know, um, how long does the hearing take? So that impacts how much we pay the stenographer. Um, how long does it take impacts what we pay uh Ms. Burkhart and Mr. Alexander for their. Services, uh, and possibly if it involves uh Mr. Pitch. Uh, we pay his service, so there's not a set cost. It 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 fluctuates with how controversial and how long the hearing might go on. And then whether or not we want to purchase the uh, what's it called, thing that they write up. The transcript, uh, that costs money as well. And, you know, so it's impossible to know. Uh, for that particular thing, exactly how much it's going to cost for each hearing. So, um. Do you have any other specific?
Me?
Yeah.
I guess from last workshop meeting till now, I just, is everyone confident, these have been addressed, like we have real numbers, these are are accurate. Was my first thing, so I think it's for us all to discuss. Has everyone checked these?
I I don't, I share the same comment, I, Trisha, I used some comments, I I think. If, and and I don't know, I know the zoning. The zoning hearing board, um, the zoning hearing, um. For costs, it it does say that if um. I think if 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 there is a a cost that exceeds the escrow amount, that Verona will send an invoice due in thirty days for the applicant. For the remaining amount owed to cover these expenses, I think that does cover us to to bill someone, um. I do feel like, yeah, we had a great discussion at the workshop about a lot of these things, just checking what. What it would cost us to administer and making sure that we cover those, and I I I think. You know, I'm not opposed to passing this because we don't have a fee schedule right now, and we need to get something in place so that we, if if this. These things come up, we have something to charge, but I do think. We may need to take a closer look at some of these costs, like the park permit. Maybe the zoning hearing board and and adjust them in the near, near future. Um, so I I would echo what what Joey stated, um. You know, I'd be happy to help with. Um, some combination of the committee or Christine or Craig and try to put together cost estimates for administering these, these things, if it would help. Make sure that we're, you know, all of these, these in the fee schedule are are accurate, and maybe, maybe we don't need to change a lot of them. Other than, or any of them other than the park permit, but um, just, I just want to make sure we're we're doing our diligence too.
Yeah, we did um confer with Oakmont and their borough manager, I know Craig checked with a couple of the municipalities. So at this point, I'm fairly confident we're actually over for the average cost of most of the hearings. Um, but I'm not opposed if anyone wishes to, yeah, go back digging the records a little bit, um, to get more data on that. Um, definitely, uh, to your earlier points, Nancy, about the parks, that obviously will have a lot of forthcoming provisions to that as well.
And again, this is a resolution, we can always change it.
That's correct.
As we, as we see, or we might have missed something. And or whatever.
It's a lot less expensive than changing an ordinance, but it still does involve the solicitor's time, so it's not free.
My recommendation would be to get it on the books. And then we can fine tune it as as we need to sometime down down the road. With regard to hearings, like zoning hearing board hearings, those are what's called quasi judicial proceedings. There's no way that you can set forth in your resolution to a penny what your, what the borough is going to be spending. It's like. When you uh file a lawsuit downtown, there's a filing fee. You don't get to include the judge's time, the minute clerk's time, uh, the tip staff's time and everybody else's time that's spent on the case. For God knows how long. You have to set a fee which you feel is reasonable to incur, recoup as much as as possible to that fee. Because there will be some costs that that's that aren't recoverable in those sorts of quasi judicial proceedings. But I would get, I would, I would get it on the books and and we can move from there.
Going comment I on page two, there was a slight discrepancy, um. The the fifty-five for commercial and twenty-five for residential, that was in the original draft.
Okay.
I think the borough had decided to just go seventy-five flat.
Where, where are you talking about?
Page two.
Page two?
The single sided copy.
Section two?
No, section one, it would be on sheet number two. Property fifty-five and a residential property twenty-five. But then.
Would you still be comfortable tabling this until the workshop meeting? Or or until the the November meeting?
I think with the new path of business and workshop, I I thought it was a very productive workshop meeting. I feel like we had a lot of good notes, we had solid feedback.
I mean, we spent a lot of time on it, there's no need to rush it. We have thirty days isn't going to make a difference one way or another. If you feel more comfortable, yeah, I'm comfortable putting it on, putting it on the books if if we can do it with that correction that Magic made. But if you want to go through it one last time, why don't you take the time to do that?
Yeah, because I have another question in section, um.
We're going to table, let's just table it, and then we can.
But I I'd just like to point this out, section nine. I don't even know what this degradation fee is. Now I'm saying I have to know what it is right now. I just am saying, and, and there's a discrepancy. The mayor and I were talking that maybe this is supposed to be higher than $75 for a street opener. So.
So why don't we take 30 days and go through it with a fine tuning phone? We'll come back on the, uh, code and ordinance meeting on the third Monday, right? Which is next Monday. So here, if you have, we can, we can finalize it at that meeting if you guys have the opportunity to go through it within the next week. That'd be great.
And, and write an email to, to like specifics of what people want to address. Yeah, cause I, I can live with it without the Parks and Rec specifics, but some other things are coming up. But you guys, I just wanna let you know, when you're talking like that, those mics are hot. Every little whisper that you say is going into the audience on Zoom. So I, I'd like to recommend, maybe we don't do that.
We were just talking about.
No, I understand, I understand. It's just saying that the guys at home are hearing what you're saying because we've revised our, our sound and now they can hear what you're whispering about. Okay.
Do I make a, make a motion to table?
Well, right now, what we have, we don't have a motion at all, okay. So go ahead, Trish.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the fee resolution, but please definitely take the time to send any comments preferably ahead of the next discussions. We can make every effort to resolve them.
Hopefully before next Monday, right?
I'll second that.
Okay, first by Ms. Redz, XO Walter, second by Mr. Suchovich to table items. Kay.
Motion to table goes directly to a vote.
Oh, okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Okay, we're on L, I think that's you, Mr.
Thank you. The file item, thank you for waiting.
It's not really Janet.
Is action on a resolution to permit the inter municipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license number R 955 into Verona Borough from Robinson Township.
And we did have a hearing about this. I think any questions were answered then. Can I have?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I have a motion for this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna go with.
Do you make a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the R R 95 liquor license from Robinson Township.
Okay, first by Mr. Suchovich, second.
I'll second the.
Second, then Mr. Such.
I have a question.
Yes?
You just brought to my attention. There's a link on the resolution on a paper, or.
There's, there's an error in the, in the title. I got it. We're gonna sign the signature page and I'll fix that error in the title.
I didn't know if it was, then you knew. We're gonna go with the R 955.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion pass.
Congratulations.
And now you can go to Giant Eagle whenever they get it done.
It's worth the wait, right, George?
I will email you a copy of the resolution in the morning.
That'd be great, thanks so much.
Okay.
Thanks, Josh.
And I believe we have one more item, which would be item M.
Yes.
Bye, this is all, though.
Thank you, and that is to purchase the popcorn machine, and that is actually a total of $383. For the popcorn machine, $100 for candy, for the handout for chocolate treat, and $10 for the tote, for a total of $493.
Okay, so are you making that motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, a second. Second by Mr. Suchovich. Uh, any other questions, comments on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Wow, that was great. Okay, so at this time, council will hear comments on public related items. Please approach the podium or raise your virtual hand, clearly state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Any comments from the public?
Bill Davis, 537 Ridge Avenue, Verona, PA. What I'm requesting is a cost of living raise for the crossing guards. And I'd like to find out where we can get some rain gear for the crossing guards. We have no rain gear. Second of all, I'd like to find out when we can get the crosswalks, the lines painted on Center Avenue up on top. I talked to Mr. Warner, he said over on South Avenue, same thing, crosswalk lines aren't painted up there either.
Okay.
The, from last year, the water problem on the quarter down by the church with me. I still got swimming pools down there. Last year, they said they were gonna try and rectify that by cutting a drainage ditch down along the thing and that stuff. There's still nothing been done with that yet. I still got kids playing in the swimming pool there. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you say again where that, where the water issue is exactly?
South Avenue, or ARB.
Right by the church.
Right by the church.
Okay.
I know. Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
Bill, the first two items that is put into the budget.
They did give you a providing?
Yes.
Who have to see about getting rain gear for it, but see you, like getting some sort of book so I can get the information on rain gear?
I think, um. Yeah, we'll see if we have it over in the, in the station. I'm sure there's a book over there. Just, just ask the chief, you see, you probably run into him a lot more. Tell him I says, there, there should be a book over there for uniforms and equipment and what have you.
The other piece of information I wanted to share with you regarding getting the crosswalks painted. We don't have paint and we cannot get paint. It's been on back order since March of this year. So like, it is like literally impossible to get paint for crosswalks right now. We have two gallons of paint, but it requires eight gallons per intersection. So it's, it's, it's on the list of things to do, but we literally cannot do it because it's not available. And, and part of that was because of the storm that happened in Texas in the spring that knocked out the power grid, also messed up the supply chain because a lot of the chemicals that were needed to make that kind of paint apparently were manufactured in Texas. And so it, we just, we literally can't get it.
You mean to tell me you can't do it to PenDOT, tell PenDOT that you have a situation where you need paint and get a half a gallon or half a 55 gallon drum of white paint from them?
It is my understanding we could not just go to PenDOT and demand paint. The other issue is if, if we cannot buy it because it is on back order, then PenDOT is likely having a similar issue in, in getting paint. I mean, this is, this is a nationwide issue right now. So I understand the concern.
Sir, sir. Concern up here because I got people coming up on the hill, there aren't even stop, stop cars.
Sir, this is public comment. Now you had your opportunity to comment. Now it's the borough's response. We, we can't debate back and forth. She's trying to tell you what the answer is. You gotta let her, listen to her, and then we're gonna move on to another public comment. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything about South and Abbey?
No.
Okay, okay, any other public, come on up.
Rhoda Warre, 636 Third Street, Verona. I don't know, I've heard like a million rumors, I don't know what's true and what's not, about TE fall. And I'm hoping that we are putting something together as an ordinance to, because we've worked so hard during this revitalization to raise the bar for Verona. And I saw it is not gonna make it on the main drag. So I'm hoping that you're gonna work together to put something in place before they move in. And I, again, it's a rumor that I heard McDermott's buying the property.
And, and when you're done, I'll comment on that.
And I'm hoping that, like I said, we can put something in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
Rhoda, we have been working on that. I think you and I talked about that at community days or, or whatever it was. Trish and I have been working on that and I've also been looking at the deed index to, to see if there's been any transfer of that property, and so far there has been none. So hopefully we'll get, we did have a draft of an ordinance, but we felt that it wouldn't be enforceable once we got our, our teeth into it. So we're trying to figure out some way to get something that would be enforceable to protect the, you know, the, the gateway to the community.
Also, if the code enforcement can also be involved.
Absolutely.
All right, any more public comment?
Since Rhoda, 323 Penn Street. This has to do with Cribs, and since we got the metal picnic tables in, there is an overabundance of picnic tables at that park right now. We have, the wooden picnic tables were given to us by the contractor, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so could council seriously consider maybe moving the wooden picnic tables from Cribs down to Railroad Park? Cause I think they could be used down here for, you brought up how people have been using it for graduation parties or weddings or anything. It would be nice to have some lightweight movable wooden picnic tables at this park for people to use.
Yeah.
They're crammed underneath the pavilion right now and there's, you can't really walk underneath there or something like the tables. So we, we should probably disperse some to the other parks.
These are famine, right?
Yeah.
So where would you recommend that we put them?
I don't think you need them at Riverbank Park. I think they would get.
No, but where in the park?
I mean, you can put them under the pavilion for now to keep them out of the sun.
I agree with him because I've seen people eating their lunch there along with, on their computer and what have you. It would be nice, probably it would fit at least two if not. At least two should be under there.
We have four up there, four wooden, four wooden ones, but they're only six floors.
Were they ever weatherproofed with something? So they would probably need to be.
It's on the list. I've spoken with BPW about that already and that's on the list to be done before.
Yeah, they're gonna need, they, they're, they got a little bit of graffiti on them, so they're gonna need sanded or painted or touched up. Just before they, they're not being used up there.
Right. Great idea.
And, and I do recommend putting them under the pavilion because it would keep them out of the elements and sun, rain and all that stuff, so.
Thank you. Good idea. Do we have any public comment on Zoom? Oh, there we go. Okay.
Tim Long, 323 Penn Street. First off, I am the treasurer of the Lower Valley Athletic Foundation. In two weeks, we are holding a costume party at Chelsea Grill. It's a Dungeons and Dragons interactive event. All the money that we will be raising from this will go into future park upgrades through our foundation.
What's the date again?
It's on the 24th, locked up, it's a Sunday.
10:44 Sunday.
The other thing is, is for about a week, we drove by, drove by, walked by the park here, and there was a sign for River Monster down at 107 Arena in the park. It was there for about a week and then I just, I wanted to just bring it up, make sure that people aren't just advertising in our parks without permission.
Yeah, that's on our radar. And, and it also made me think of this, you know, temporary sign permit thing. So, you know, definitely working on that. Anybody else? Okay, going once, going twice. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay, don't everybody jump at once. Suchovich, Matlin, any opposed, questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Motion pass. Woo-hoo, look at that, 9:05 PM.